Good afternoon. Today is Tuesday, June 15, 2021. This is a regular meeting of the San Diego Valley Union High School District Board of Education. Teri, please note that all members are present and that Dr. Baiki is on speakerphone. All right, let's all stand for the flag so we can...
Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we approve the agenda, I would like to make a motion that we move... I'd like to move item J2 up under C1, and I would like to delete item K8. Do I have a motion for that?
Yes, I will.
Okay, Tori? And a second, Jose Juan? I have a motion and a second to move item J2 up under C1 and delete item K8. Teri, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Clevinger.
Aye.
Mrs. Babcock.
Aye.
Dr. Baiki.
Aye.
Mr. Abara.
Aye.
Mr. Luke.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, thank you. Okay, are there any public comments relating to closed session? I didn't receive any cards, Teri. No cards? All right. So we will go into closed session at this time. The time is 5:35. So, members of the community, we're going to stay here and do our closed session. It shouldn't take very long. If you would mind going outside, and we'll be right back in. Okay? Thank you. We are now back in open session. And I would like to report out that the board voted unanimously, five zero, to appoint Andrew Schwab as our superintendent beginning in the year 2021. So, we will take one more piece of action on that. Item J point two is the approval of the contract. Board members, you have the contract in front of you. So I will entertain a motion to approve the contract.
I move to approve the contract.
Okay, Jose? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Tori, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Teri, would you please call for roll call? Oh, wait, whoops. I almost forgot my jaw. I'm sorry. I would have been...
He is excited.
No, I just... Okay, so, good thing we didn't do vote before that. And I'm not out of sequence. So, this item is the board's discussion and possible approval of an employment agreement with Andrew Schwab as superintendent. Before we can take any action on the proposed contract, I have to provide the following verbal summary of the compensation and benefit terms of the proposed contract. Mr. Schwab would be employed from July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024 as superintendent. Mr. Schwab will be paid $171,360 annually with a work year of 220 days. At his election, Mr. Schwab may be paid for 10 additional workdays at his daily rate. Mr. Schwab will not receive paid vacation and holidays. Mr. Schwab will receive all health and insurance benefits that are provided to the district's certificated staff and/or management personnel. Sick leave will accrue at a rate of one day per month. Mr. Schwab will be entitled to reimbursement for actual and necessary expenses incurred in the scope of his employment. He will receive a $50 per month reimbursement for cellular phone expenses and $250 per month in a transportation allowance for district travel within Santa Barbara County. The district will pay Mr. Schwab's membership dues in the Association of California School Administrators, one local club, and other professional or community groups as approved by the board. This concludes a summary of the employment agreement. A copy of the proposed employment agreement is available on the back counter. Teri's walking it over right now. So, I guess at this point, any further discussion or comment on possible approval of the agreement? Board members, anything more? We have a motion and a second to approve the contract of Andrew Schwab beginning in 2021. Teri, roll call, please.
Mrs. Clevinger.
Aye.
Mrs. Babcock.
Aye.
Dr. Baiki.
Aye.
Mr. Abara.
Aye.
Mr. Luke.
Aye.
All right, motion carries five zero. Congratulations, Andrew. And if you want to introduce your family and say a few words, we'd be more than happy to.
Is this microphone on?
Yes. I don't know if it's on. There's a look there.
There's no one. Is it working now?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much. And I'm very excited to be here and join an amazing district. I should probably introduce my family. My wife, V, is here. My oldest, Madison, and Aylton, our young 10-year-old back there.
All right.
We're very excited to be joining you and coming on. Thank you.
Thank you. We're excited to have you onboard. All right. And I know that it's been a long day for you, so if you want to leave and get some dinner or whatever and head up the road, that's fine with us. All right.
That's right.
Thank you. All right. Okay, let's see. All right, we'll move on to item D, which is public comment. Teri, did we get any public comment forms? Okay.
I have no cards.
Okay, no cards. All right. Every once in a while, would you just check to make sure John's with us? Just... Yeah, okay. All right. Item E, approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, Jose Juan? Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, Steve? We have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion on any items on the consent agenda?
I have one question, if I may, Ms. Lewis. Under G1, the financial report, there was something about the in lieu of property tax to the charter school. I'm assuming that's Olive Grove, right?
Correct.
Okay, it's $243,000 per year. Will this potentially go up? Is that predicated on their enrollment or on our revenues?
It's predicated on a number of factors. It's a calculation done... I'm sorry. It's predicated on a number of factors. It's a calculation done by the CDE. It takes into account their ADA for students that are residents of our district's boundaries. So it is conceivable that they would grow year after year. It also does take into account the revenue that we receive and the LCFF calculations because they do a per ADA amount based on our revenues. So it's a number of different things the CDE calculates to come up with that amount.
Does this go on in perpetuity, or is there a limit on the time?
So right now, the Olive Grove Charter School was approved for a five-year charter, and I believe that this would be year two... No, we're just finishing year two of their charter. We are entering year three of their charter. So I assume that they would be bringing that charter back for...
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Good question. Okay. Are there any other items of discussion on the consent agenda? All right.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, Steve, go ahead.
One question. On the warrants for CJ Seto's support services, $12,000.
Do you want to know what that's for?
Yeah, what is that for?
So he disposes our toxic waste. So he does not only the toxic waste that is produced by our maintenance department, they also handle the chemicals for the science department annually. So we have to dispose of certain chemicals at certain intervals. They dispose of them and then replace them for our science department as well as our maintenance.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions? All right, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call, Teri.
Mrs. Clevinger.
Aye.
Mrs. Babcock.
Aye.
Dr. Baiki.
Aye.
Mr. Abara.
Aye.
Mr. Luke.
Aye.
Great. Motion carries five zero. Let's go on down to item three, action agenda. We already did number two, which was the appointment of the new superintendent and approval of superintendent contract. So let's go to item three, which is 2021-22 Agriculture Incentive Grant Application Approval. Alicia.
Yes, this is an annual approval of a proposed ag incentive grant that is run and maintained by Heather Clement in the ag department. So we approve it every year so that she can submit it. The amount of funds that they're expecting to receive is $18,684. That is not a guarantee. We usually receive pretty darn close to what is in the application, but it's not always exact. So she just needs our approval in order to submit the application.
Okay.
Or your approval.
Do I have a motion to approve? So move. Tori, do you have a second?
Second.
Jose Juan? Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the ag incentive grant application. Is there any further discussion? Questions? Okay. All right, roll call, Teri.
Mrs. Clevinger.
Aye.
Mrs. Babcock.
Aye.
Dr. Baiki.
Aye.
Mr. Abara.
Aye.
Mr. Luke.
Aye.
All right, motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item four, Classified Bargaining Unit AB 1200 and Tentative Agreement. Alicia?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so before you tonight, numbers four, five, and six pertain to the settlements or the proposed tentative settlements for the negotiations for our three bargaining units that we have on campus. The first one is our classified bargaining unit. And you'll notice in each item, you have both the tentative agreement that outlines the terms of the agreement as well as what is called the AB 1200. The AB 1200 is a document that the state and the county require for us as a district to fill out that outline in more technical financial terms what the impact of these agreements will be to our district's budget for next year and the three out years. So for us, because of the timing that we're doing this, there is no impact to this year's 2021 budget. So what you'll notice is that the AB 1200 takes the proposed original budget that you'll be seeing in the discussion and uses that as the metric for the budget and the numbers that it's using. So we are only looking at the actual years associated with these agreements. So it's actually a little bit cleaner in that respect. So the classified bargaining agreement consists of 8% increase on salary schedule in '21-'22, 3% in '22-'23, followed by a final 3% in '23-'24. They also have a seventh step added to their salary schedule. Right now, as a classified employee, when you begin, you start on step one and you work your way through six steps. At the sixth step, there is no increase in your base salary aside from any increases that are granted during the negotiations process. What this does is adds a seventh step so that our classified have just one more year to move through guaranteed raises prior to negotiations being their only increase. This also addresses health and welfare. For the '21-'22 year, they... Well, for all three years, they'll see an increase of 1.5% to their health and welfare. And you see that the cap rises from the current cap of $16,849 to a total of $17,619 in the '23-'24 fiscal year. The final aspect of the classified agreement is the hours per work year or the days per work year. They've requested the day before Thanksgiving be added as an additional classified paid holiday. Tradition in the district is that that day is only a half day for our classified 12-month employees, and I believe there is a total of 11, if I remember correctly, full-time employees that this addresses. So you're just granting them the second half of that day as a vacation paid holiday.
Okay. Thank you, Alicia. Do I have a motion to approve the classified bargaining unit AB 1200 and tentative agreement?
I make a motion to approve classified bargaining unit AB 1200 and tentative agreement.
All right, I'll second that. You have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, Teri.
Mrs. Clevinger.
Aye.
Mrs. Babcock.
Aye.
Dr. Baiki.
Aye.
Mr. Abara.
Aye.
Mr. Luke.
Aye.
Great. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item five, Classified Management Confidential Unit AB 1200 and Tentative Agreement. Again, Alicia?
Yes, so we're reviewing the same items as we were for the classifieds. So this is our second bargaining unit. This is our classified management bargaining unit. This is also a three-year agreement with no reopeners. The salary increase for the '21-'22 fiscal year is 4%, followed by 3% in '22-'23 and 3% in '23-'24. Health and welfare increases match that of the classified bargaining unit at 1.5% each year, bringing the current hard cap for health and welfare from $16,849 for the 2021 fiscal year to $17,619 in the '23-'24 fiscal year. Additionally, the classified management normally gets December 23 as a half-day paid holiday, and they're asking for the second half of that day as a holiday. So it's an additional half day.
Great. Thank you, Alicia. I'll make a motion to approve a classified management confidential unit AB 1200 and tentative agreement. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Jose Juan? Great. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Teri?
Mrs. Clevinger.
Aye.
Mrs. Babcock.
Aye.
Dr. Baiki.
Aye.
Mr. Abara.
Aye.
Mr. Luke.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. All right. Item six, Faculty Association AB 1200 and Tentative Agreement. Alicia?
Okay, this is our final bargaining unit. This is the faculty association bargaining unit. This is our certificated employees that are non-management. Again, this is a three-year agreement with no reopeners. The faculty association took a more creative approach to how they handled their compensation increases rather than spreading it out over the three years. They decided that they were going to do their entire increase in the first year of the agreement. So in the '21-'22 fiscal year, they will have an 11% increase on the salary schedule, followed by two years of 0% increases to the salary schedule. They also have additional items that are not as simplistic as the classified and classified management. So there is also a coaching and a co-curricular share schedule, which is the basis for how we pay our coaches and those teachers that do things like robotics and ASB advisor and those types of things, and they are paid per share. The share percentage is going to increase for both coaching and co-curricular at the same rate as the base salary schedule for the faculty. So it's 11% the first year, followed by 0% and 0%. We are creating what we are calling a department share stipend in a flat amount of $3,500 annually, and this amount is not subject to any on-schedule or off-schedule increases in this agreement. I'm just going to read through the fiscal impact. There's a lot of things in this agreement that are not fiscal-related. Would you like me to bring those up or just discuss the fiscal?
I think the fiscal is fine.
Okay. 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 We are increasing the initial step placement for our new hires, going from a maximum of six years of credit for previous teaching experience to eight years of credit, as long as it's within the subject area in which the service occurred. And the sub-credit rate will increase from $42 to $45 per period for periods one through six, and from $30 to $32 per period for seventh period. And these sub-credits are how we pay our teachers who choose to use their off-periods or their break periods to sub for other teachers, so we don't have to pay for a full-day sub. So that's what those are. Their health and welfare will not... Their cap will not increase the first year of this agreement. It will remain at the $16,849, and in the '22-'23 fiscal year, they will increase by 1%. And then in the '23-'24 fiscal year, they will increase by 2%. So their hard cap will go from $16,849 to a total of $17,358. Important to note is that we are going from a total contracted number of days of 181 to 183, and the rest is non-fiscal in nature. So if you have questions, Michelle or myself are happy to answer those for you, but those are the fiscal.
Okay. Great.
I do have a question.
Go ahead, John.
Did I understand correctly, you said that this three-year contract, instead of having an 11% scheduled increase with X percent year one, X percent year two, X percent year three, they're getting an entire 11% upfront on year one and then zero and zero for year two and year three? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
And does everybody agree with me that doing it that way is not fiscally the same as if there was 11% spread out over three years?
Are you asking me or the other board members?
Well, I guess I'm asking the board. Or anybody that would like to correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, that's a much more expensive option to the district as I see it, and if I'm wrong, somebody please correct me.
Alicia, would you address that, please?
Yeah, you are absolutely not wrong, Dr. Baiki. There's a number of different reasons and rationales, both for and against, but you are not wrong. 11% upfront to the district is more expensive immediately out of the chute than 11% over the course of three years. However, 11% over the course of three years does compound, so it does become more expensive if you consider pirs and stirs rising and the cost of all that. So if you were to do the math, it is more expensive right away. It is a bigger hit to the district right away.
But over time...
But over time, it's not that dramatically different. If anything, it may be slightly cheaper simply because it's done, and then for two years, you don't have increases while stirs continues to increase.
Well, you're correct. It's the compounding that concerns me, and so I guess it's relative, if you say it's not that much more expensive. So how much more expensive is it?
I would have to do the figures. I don't have those in front of me. But it is a significant chunk out of the '21-'22 fiscal year.
Well, I mean, does anybody else on the board feel that we should know exactly what the increase hit is going to be to our budget? Or does nobody care about that?
Well, John, I don't think it's not that nobody cares about it. I think that we've accepted that the agreement, and that was a real sticking point in negotiations.
And Dr. Baiki, if you are able to access the board docs, it has a cost breakdown in board docs for each year, and then if you're able to pull up the AB 1200, you can see in detail how this agreement impacts our three-year, multi-year agreement in those documents.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. No more questions.
Thanks, John.
All right, so I have a card here. Did we just get this card, Teri? Okay, after we started the discussion? Okay, and the items should come before the discussion. But I'm going to go ahead and let Ms. Phillipin speak.
Well, good thing I'm on the phone. So thank you for letting me speak very quickly. It's kind of an impromptu comment, but when I heard the 11%, my first thought was 11% upfront over three years, what would be the incentive to stay for year two and three if you were employed? That concerns me because that's something I would think about. Well, I'd want everything upfront too if I plan to leave, so I think that's something you need to consider. So I'm actually glad Dr. Baiki brought that up because I was thinking about the costs and what's the benefit of giving the 11% upfront. So I just want you to think about that. What would be the incentive for an employee to stay? They got all their... I mean, 11% is pretty... That's nice. Not very often you get more than, you know, the cost of living. So just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Alicia. All right. I will entertain a motion to approve a faculty association AB 1200 and tentative agreement. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the faculty association AB 1200 and tentative agreement.
All right. Do I have a second? I'll second it. All right. With that, is there any further discussion? We've had that agreement and everything in front of us for quite a while. We have asked plenty of questions about it. Yeah. All right, Teri.
Mrs. Clevinger.
Aye.
Mrs. Babcock.
Aye.
Dr. Baiki.
Aye.
Mr. Abara.
Aye.
Mr. Luke.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you, board. All right. Onto K, which is discussion items. Item two, 2021 and 2022 original adopted budget and '21-'22 through '23-'24 multi-year projections, public hearing. That would be Alicia.
Yeah, it is me. I'm going to go up there and make sure this is showing up here.
Okay, great. Just a tech moment here.
Let me just make sure it shows up here.
Sure. Oh, that should hit you better. Thank you, Teri. This will work from here.
Okay, cool. So I want to start by just reminding everyone what the budget reporting consists of. Every time that we have a budget, you will receive SACS forms, an analysis of changes, an excess reserves reporting form, and then a presentation going over everything. Again, the SACS forms are those forms that we send to the state. They're slightly less palatable, but they are important, and we've reviewed where to look on those SACS forms for the pertinent information. The analysis of changes is probably the easiest to digest between budget to budget, and all of that is posted on the budget website. The excess reserves reporting forms is basically a technicality that we have to report to the state in a specific way about our excess reserves. Because we are a basic aid district, we have no cap on our excess reserves, but we still have to report out the same way as an LCFF district would. And an LCFF district does have a cap as to the number and the amount or percentage of reserves that they can carry. So that is why we do that. Okay, on to the actual original budget. Okay, so the budget module assumptions. These are the assumptions that we use when creating the budget model. They're basically our predictions. These are underlying foundational principles that guide the creation of the budget. So original budgets are difficult simply because they are probably the most flimsy of all the budgets that come before you, simply because our beginning fund balances are very, very rough estimates. We have not finished spending or receiving money for this year, let alone do we know what our ending fund balances are, to know what our beginning fund balances are for the next year. So we've had things come up like a boiler that went down that we didn't expect to have to replace just in the last two days. We've had extra hours over time. We've had a myriad of things that are little, but when you add them all together, they can swing a pendulum one way or the other. We also haven't received lottery funds that were still budgeted to receive for this year. So it's halfway through June. They have until July or August to finalize all these things for this fiscal year when we are already in next fiscal year. So this budget is a best guess scenario based on what we know at the time. So our guest ending fund balances and our guest beginning fund balances. So we have used in this budget model a 2% property tax increase across all three years. This is a conservative increase in property taxes. Historically, we've seen closer to three-ish, but we keep it at two simply because we aren't sure what the impact of everything with COVID is going to be, and we would rather be wrong and have more money than wrong and not have enough. So we're maintaining that conservative approach. We have removed and added all one-time monies, both expenditures and revenues, in the budget. So those one-time funds that came to us this year and the previous year for COVID that have already been expended have been removed from the out years, and those monies that are yet to be received or yet to be spent, or those monies that we know are coming in in the future years, are in the budget. Our property tax figures... So the way that we got the 2% is using a 2% increase from what we've received and what we're budgeting for this year. We don't actually get our property tax figures for... property tax figures for next year until sometime, sometime around first interim, October-ish, um, so hopefully they're higher than that, but our 2% is based on our P2 numbers for this year, so the second estimate that the county assessor's office has given us for this year is what we are using as our basis to add the 2% to, so we still don't have our annual property tax numbers for this year yet, so even those are guestimates. At the time that I created this budget model, negotiations were not settled, and we weren't even in a position for me to guesstimate where we were gonna go with negotiations, so the budget model that you see here does not include any impact of negotiations, we'll discuss that in a later presentation tonight. We are a basic aid district, so our ADA is not terribly important to us in terms of funding, we do have some pots of money that are based on our ADA, but not, definitely not the majority and not very large pots, so while it is important to note that we had declining enrollment this year, there are a lot of factors that went into that, like hybrid learning, COVID-19, the availability of schools that already had online learning and kids that moved within those programs, we are looking at enrollment for next year, and it looks like enrollment is following the uptick, the historical trend, so while we have been declining for the last two or three years, it looks like we are starting to come out of that, and that's sort of the historical trend with the district, every few years, we hover from 800 to 1,000 students, so I don't feel like we should be overly concerned about that, and at the time of this budget model, we were maintaining a $3 million board required minimum fund balance. Our revenue, so the best way to sort of compare revenue is to try to compare apples and apples, here, we're comparing apples and some oranges, so if you notice, um, column one is actuals for 1819, that is what we actually received in revenue for 1819 when we, you know, when all was said and done, same thing for 1920, those are our actuals. What you see in the third column with the green at the bottom is our estimated actuals, meaning, again, just our best guess at this current juncture of what we're gonna receive for this year, and then you notice that our 21, 22 budget is also an estimate, but that it is increasing in revenue, from an estimated actuals for this year of about 14 million to about 14.3 million for next year. Same thing with expenditures, you'll see the actuals column for 1819, followed by the actuals column in 1920, and then you'll have our estimated actuals for 2021, and then our guesstimate for 2122, there are a number of things in play here, if you notice the jump from 13.6 to 16, the board and the district's priorities were twofold, spend down the excess reserves as they were ballooning year after year, and it was causing contention among staff to, to carry such a voluminous, uh, excess reserve, and also to address some failing facilities, namely, the football stadium, baseball bleachers, some disrepair for painting and, you know, campus projects such as that, so if you notice, you notice the difference between the actuals of 1920 and the dramatic increase in 2021, in addition to the purposeful spend down COVID happened, and there were a myriad of expenses related to PPE, overtime, extra hours, tech devices for students, all of these supplies that we bought for students that we have not bought in the past, all of those things that, you know, um, contribute to this significant jump, and if you notice, in 2122, we're jumping significantly the other way, so 21 to 22 contains some contingencies, one of those contingencies is our cafeteria fund, we've never had to carry our cafeteria fund the way that we've had to carry it this past year, so there was a statute that came down that said you are not allowed to release any of your classified employees when COVID hit, you have to maintain staffing for your Fund 13, which is our cafeteria fund, for the next year, so, um, 2021 was that next year. As a result of all the kids being home, and then when the kids came on campus having programs that made the lunches entirely free to students, a couple of things happened, one, we had more staffing than required to get the job done, but we had no choice, so that was number one, number two was, the program to feed all students for free is fantastic for the students, it's great, it got everybody fed, but it stopped the excess sales on à la carte items, or the revenue generated by those students who were paid students, so all of those funds that used to be generated by the cafeteria department were not, were not generated, so we had to contribute a little over $200,000 to the cafeteria program this year. In the 2122 budget, I've sliced it in half, simply because I feel strongly that the kids are gonna come back, they're gonna be back full-time, and they're gonna be buying, hopefully, à la carte items, now, the, the caveat to that is, if the state comes back and says all students are still free next year, we have to see whether we will even be allowed to sell the à la carte items and those things, if that happens, then there's gonna be another hit the other way, to have to, you know, make up that difference, so I've removed half of the carrying of the cafeteria, so about $100,000, I've removed from the budget, that could very well be put back, but hopefully not, so that is one of our expenditures that could swing for next year's budget. So, as you guys may remember, we have the restricted and the unrestricted, the restricted is monies that come in for a specific purpose, you may only spend them within a specific timeframe for a specific item or items on a list that are approved for whatever the pot of money may come from, the unrestricted is, are those funds that are mostly property tax, but also funds that come in from the state or federal government that are not specifically restricted to a specific expenditure type or class or program, and the unrestricted general fund is where we house our excess reserves, and basically, it's our main checking account, if you wanna look at it in more simplistic terms, I have here our actuals for 1819, actuals for 1920, our estimated actuals for 2021, and then again, our guesstimate for 2122, the beginning fund balances there are good and strong and solid until we get to 2122, I'm hoping that when you, when we actually finish closing our books for 2021, that that beginning fund balance will increase based on what hasn't been spent this year and revenue that's come in, the deficit is what is most concerning, um, the deficit increased dramatically when you look at actuals over actuals, so every year, we say, guys, we have a deficit, we have a deficit, we're spending more than we're bringing in, and many years, estimated actuals or actuals have come in, and there hasn't been a deficit, that changed in 1920, because we actually spent all of what we thought we were gonna spend, and actually took away from our savings account in our main checking account, so every year, we've said, okay, here's our mortgage, here's our light bill, here's our car bill, at the end of the year, we think we're gonna overspend by $100, and every year, we got an extra paycheck, or we, you know, our light bills came under, and we ended up not spending everything we thought, so that's generally how good budgeting is done, is you overestimate a little bit, so that at the end of the year, if you are wrong, you're wrong in a positive way, meaning you have more money than you think, and that's what we've been doing, until 1920, when we actually saw the shift to, okay, we actually did spend too much this year, um, if you notice, the estimated actuals deficit is substantial, this consists of about 575,000 related to bleachers and the land improvements that had to go along with that, so the, the dirt moving and all of that stuff that had to happen, um, there was, okay, there was also ancillary Measure K funds and the amount of 375,000, so when Measure K went to the voters, there was a caveat that the district would put in $500,000 of their own general fund money towards ancillary projects that would be, um, unearthed by bond work or would be in conjunction with bond work, so, you know, when you rip into walls and you fix pipes, fixing it just means drywall, then you have to paint it, but the painting wasn't bond work, so we had district funds, and 375 of those types of projects were included, um, in addition, we had the football field and everything else that we discussed related to COVID-19 student devices and those types of things that are contributing to the projected deficit for this year, so if you notice, our ending fund balance is significantly depleted, um, is estimated to be significantly depleted by the end of the 2021 fiscal year, the board required reserve across the board maintained, is maintained at 3 million, and the excess fund balance at the bottom is showing that the district is in a very good place financially, meaning that over and above the $3 million that the board has said that we need to keep on hand for emergencies, we have an additional, starting at 1819, 3.4 million, 4.7 million, 2.1 million, 1.3 million, so despite the fact that we've had these hardships, and despite the fact that we're pulling from our savings to, to make our budget work for these past couple of years, we still have a lot in our savings account, is basically what this is telling us. Okay, so looking at multi-year projections, so with each budget iteration, you have to have a budget for the current or upcoming fiscal year in addition to the next two fiscal years, to show that the district can meet all of its obligations for that three-year period in order to have a positively qualified budget. So, multi-year projections have assumptions just like the foundation of an original budget, we keep the increase for our property taxes at the conservative 2%, all one-time revenues and expenditures are removed or added as necessary.
Excuse me, where, and that 2% came from where?
So that 2% is, the base of that is the P2 annual tax guesstimate from the county assessor's office, so P2 is an attendance term, and it's basically around, oh, okay, like February, so it's about the February, it's the second estimate we received from the county assessor's office, the Santa Barbara County.
Back in February?
Correct.
Because I was talking today, they said it looks like 1%.
1% overall or 1% to schools, because that would be really horrible.
Yeah, well, they, the, the conversation was that, uh, you know, property, property values have increased in the valley substantially.
Yes.
That's the good news.
Yes.
And, but tempered to that is the fact that the inventory's been low, and there hasn't been a lot of overall property sales, so on one hand, yes, they've gone up substantially, on the other hand, there hasn't been a lot of overall volume of houses moving, so, um, I hope it's 2% or 3%, but.
God, oh, two, they haven't, so normally, they alert us when they think things are gonna be dramatic, maybe they don't feel like that is dramatic.
Can we contact them and see?
We can, but they, they give generals for the county, they don't trickle it down to schools, and the, the furthest, like, um, trickling down they do is to Santa Barbara County schools as a whole, and then the county office goes in and does the calculations for each school, so.
Do we get it from county education, or do we get it from the treasurer, who do we?
So we get the numbers from the county assessor's office, who gives it to the Santa Barbara County Ed Office, who then provides it to us, so it comes from both of them, they get the numbers from them, and then they put it in spreadsheets and give it to us.
So we see the assessor's numbers as well?
Yeah, the assessor's numbers are on there, but we don't, we don't get the emails from the assessor's office, we are not speaking directly to the assess, assessors, we have their information if we want to, but they can't give us the, the information articulated down enough that it would be very useful to us usually, but I, I'm more than happy to contact them and ask them, like, does it look bad, because they can at least tell me that.
Okay, yeah, it seems to me that, well, you know, it's the government, but.
Yeah, it's an interesting, well, I will say that we are in a very insulated pocket for property taxes, we've been very lucky, even in the, the latest, or the most recent recession, we were not hit barely at all, like, we didn't see growth like we would have normally, but we didn't see any decreases, so I am hoping that this doesn't fall out of that pattern.
So the next milestone, we, we will have a better idea than 2%, is it August, September, not, not October?
Yeah, well, they may give us annual before then, so they would give us annual for this year, but that won't be any projection for next year.
Okay.
So it would, it wouldn't be until October, yeah, so let's hope that that is not for schools specifically, because that would not be good, um, okay, so, moving on with the assumptions, again, with the multi-year projections, we didn't have, um, a negotiations framework to add in here, so the three, or the two out-years for our multi-year projections do not include any negotiations effects, they have, you know, the normal step in column movement and that type of thing for employees across the board, but nothing related to negotiations, we have been using the California Consumer Price Index for increases for expenditures, but we've also made reductions in expenditures where possible, and we're continuing on our path of slowly tightening the ship and reducing any budget buffers that we've seen, so, um, about six years ago, the budget buffers were considerably large, and that was in response to a significant budgetary crisis in the past, and it led to very over-conservative budgeting with very large budget buffers built in, and that had never been tampered down, um, so we started doing that about six years ago, so the, the pros of that are that we have less of a pendulum swing with actuals and everything, but the cons of that are, we have to be much more aware of what is spent and where, and be much more, um, tight when it comes to choosing where to spend our funds, because there isn't a budget buffer to fall back on like there was in prior years.
Do you know what the CPI was, percentage-wise?
Not off the top of my head, but I can get that number to you if you'd like, yeah, um, we use a conservative, well, maybe a little bit inflated, 1.5% increase for special education services, we normally haven't seen a 1.5% increase, but considering that to be such a volatile expense with just one student with high needs moving into the district, having the capacity to blow that budget out of the water, we, we keep it at 1.5, and that seems to be reasonable, it's covered and never gone over so far, so we're, we're happy there, um, again, we are slowly decreasing our transfers out for the cafeteria fund and for other expenditures like PPE and that type of thing, as we move out of COVID, so hopefully, we don't have to add any of that back in, and again, no major budget additions and no major expenditure reductions are included in next year's budget or the two out-years, so looking at the out-years, the important things to note are our deficit and our excess reserves, so we need to start looking at addressing our deficit, especially once we know the impact of negotiations, because we do have a deficit, it does exist, and it needs to be addressed so that we have a balanced budget, so we need our expenditures to meet or be below the revenue that we receive every year, and we're not there yet, we do have some outstanding factors, we have our debt services that I believe has five more years left on it, and that's about 250,000 a year, so once we're done paying that off, that will add money back in, once we're done floating the cafeteria fund, that will add money back in, so there are a number of things that are just time-sensitive, but that will help in a positive way once they expire, um, our excess reserves.
Alicia?
Yes, ma'am.
And that will also be in consideration, that Olive Grove charter payment annually, if we only have two more years on that, and then if the district doesn't approve their charter, that, that deficit goes away, or the expense goes away?
That would be best-case scenario, because it's very likely that at the expiration of their charter, they'll bring it back, and if it is denied, that they will probably follow suit and bring it back to the state level, and if that is the case, then we will still be paying that for however long they're re, re-approved.
Okay, thanks.
So the excess reserve is concerning, again, it's after the $3 million minimum fund balance, so we still have the $3 million, but the purposeful spend down has been successful, and you see by the third year out, we only have $156,000 excess reserves over and above the $3 million, so while the, the spend down was in part purposeful and in part, you know, couldn't be avoided with COVID-19, it's just something to monitor, because the, the fall from 21, 22 to 23, 24 is significant, and we don't want to continue that trend because there won't be money left if we continue to do that. All right, so looking at the out-years again, oh, I'm sorry.
I forgot that that was in.
Cover that, okay, we need to address the deficit, we need to hold off on any fiscally significant additions such as projects, programs, building, anything like that, until after we know the impact of negotiations and know more of where we'll be, um, negotiations will affect years 21, 22 and beyond, and it will affect our excess reserves and our programs and our staffing and everything, basically everything, um, again, the cafeteria is being subsidized by the general. Um, again, the cafeteria is being subsidized by the general fund and until we can wean the cafeteria back off of that, that's a concern. Um, we need to remember that our excess reserves, while large, are one-time in nature, they are not being replenished. The only way to replenish them is to reduce the deficit in such a way that we have more revenue coming in every year than expenditures. And in order for us to do that with a budget of our size, it would, it would cause a hardship. So my suggestion is that we take our deficit in little chunks so that we're not having to have dramatic things, you know, dramatic decisions being made. Another thing to be cognizant of, when we receive our Prop fifty-one dollars, we will then be subject to what is called the Leroy Green Schools Act. And what that states is that three percent of your general fund expenditures will be required to be transferred into your deferred maintenance account every year. And right now, we transfer, over the last couple of years, anywhere from fifty thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand into our deferred maintenance every year with specific projects in mind. However, we use the deferred maintenance loosely. When we are subject to the Leroy Green Schools Act, it will be audited in such a way that projects cannot be loosely defined as deferred maintenance. The classification for a deferred maintenance project will be stricter, so the monies that are put in there will be less freely able to be used by the district for regular maintenance needs. So it will cause an increase in expenditures that we won't be able to just say, okay, well, we'll spend that out of deferred maintenance for whatever floor maintenance or wall maintenance or whatever we would normally. So it will become stricter for the district. And also a reminder that the Prop fifty-one monies that come in are restricted to construction, maintenance and modernization. However, I have a question out to our attorneys to see if we can reimburse the district for any of what the matching funds were that we have already expended for our applications, to see if any of that money can come back to the general fund as a reimbursement of funds already expensed. If we can do that, that'd be fantastic, but it would hamper your, your budget for projects that you may have on the way. So you may choose not to do that because then it will, it will reduce your budget for whatever projects you have in mind in the future for those monies. Okay, variables to consider. Again, all these numbers are estimated, they're very loose. We'll have a much better idea of where we actually are at first interim when we have some hard numbers. We normally have more money left with, with actuals than we think. We're hoping that is the case again this year. All of the costs that we've just approved for negotiations are what we consider ongoing costs. So all the costs that were approved tonight were considered on salary schedule costs, so those costs don't go away, there's not an expiration date. So those costs will need to be integrated into the budget. Changes will need to be made in order to ensure that the district, the district can maintain those costs because of the ongoing nature. Um, if we can't maintain our three million dollar reserve in an out-year in the future, we will have to make cuts to maintain the three million dollars or the board will have to take action to reduce the reserve amount. Because right now, it is a board resolution stating this amount. So I have to have it in our budget, which would mean that if we fall below that for whatever reason, then I have to dictate that X amount of dollars in cuts are made, unless the board chooses to not make X amount of dollars in cuts and to reduce the minimum fund balance.
Alicia, may I ask you please, I can't recall what the state requires for percentage, we required more, what is the percentage?
Four percent.
Four percent.
And I want to say it's somewhere around six thirty-one or six twenty-one, six hundred and twenty-one thousand. So I would strongly caution, we don't go that low simply because as a basic aid district, we, we, the state doesn't backfill. If we lose money, it's on us and it's, it's very volatile for us. So I wouldn't recommend going that low, but right now, we're sitting, I think, at about a twenty-one percent, percent, um, a twenty-one percent excess reserve or reserve rate.
Yeah, I, I agree a hundred percent, I just wanted to make sure, see what the discrepancy was.
Yeah, it's, it's a significant difference between what we're required and what we have, so. Um, okay, again, first interim will be more accurate, especially now that we have negotiations settled. We'll have real numbers so we can have a little bit more firm discussions. What questions do you have?
Alicia, could you remind me what we anticipate getting in Prop fifty-one funds?
Seven million?
Yeah, something around there, okay.
Seven, um, or am I, no, yeah, seven million, I'm pretty sure it was like seven point one or seven point three or something to that effect.
Okay.
I don't, we're not getting it all at once, it was over two or three applications, but that was our total approved amount was seven something. So I think we're getting, by the end of December, we should be receiving three or four million, I believe it is, in the first, um, portion.
First round, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question, it's more like a statement. For anyone who is here today or watching us on YouTube, um, yes, I think we're, you know, if you thought you were being met with a wall of silence when we were talking about, uh, the negotiations and the agreements, um, it's something we've discussed in several closed board meetings. And, um, you know, I think the most important people here at the school are, of course, the students. And second to that are the teachers. And I think our, I don't want to speak for the board, maybe I can on this, but I, you know, the, we want to retain and attract the best teachers we can. And certainly Sandy Inez Valley's not an inexpensive place to live, so we're mindful of that. And the teachers are looking at us sitting on a three million dollar plus surplus and saying, hey, where's, can we, can we share in that? As are the other employees of the school district. And I think our, from our point of view is, yes, you can. Uh, but at some point, you know, you can't run a business on the deficit year after year and you can't run a school on, on the deficit unless we want to turn this over to Sacramento. So we are, I think we've all agreed that we've been very generous with the staff because we appreciate the, the teachers and all the workers here at the school. And, um, we, we, we have a new board now and we're becoming more cohesive each meeting. Uh, we have a new superintendent, as you know, that starts this evening. So we will start to, uh, tackle this deficit and try to focus on this going forward. Um, but don't think because, uh, that we're just giving money away. And, uh, that's not our point of view. We want to acknowledge the people who do the yeoman's work here in, in the school district and we want to, uh, also be fiscally responsible too. So that's my question, thank you.
Thank you, please. Um, Jan, did you want me to add the settlement agreement presentation as part of the budget? That's what I, I thought we would do. If not, I can have it on the next board agenda as a discussion item, if you want it separately.
Let's have the next.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Alicia.
Of course, thank you.
Okay, that concludes the public hearing on, uh, item two, the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two original adopted budget and twenty-one, twenty-two through twenty-three, twenty-four multi-year projections. Okay, moving on to item three, I know this is exciting stuff, folks. EPA twenty-one, twenty-two budget public hearing. Alicia?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Later, and it looks like the district is estimated to receive a hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and forty next year. We are required to have a public hearing on those documents and bring the EPA budget, although it is part of the original, you know, general fund budget, we are required to call that out separately. So that's what we're doing here.
Are there any questions regarding, hey, I know we had documentation, okay. Public hearing is closed on that. All right, item four, excess reserves for twenty-one, twenty-two through twenty-three, twenty-four public hearing, it's open, Alicia?
Again, this is, um, part of the procedural requirements related to our excess funds. So despite the fact that it is a board resolution to have the three million dollar excess, it does not, um, preclude us from having to still report out everything over and above the four percent. So these documents just call out for each year of our budget cycle, you know, the original budget and the two out-years, what our excess reserves are over and above the four percent and what we plan on using them for or why we are stockpiling them.
Okay, and any questions, folks? Okay, great, public hearing's closed on that. Item five, twenty-one, twenty-two budget overview for parents, this is something new?
Um, no, it is part of our LCAP, so it's new with the LCAP.
Got new LCAP.
Yes, and they are now making us have it called out separately. So what it does is, in our LCAP, we list goals and actions and services associated with those goals and those actions and services come with a fiscal expenditure or not. And those expenditures are added up and put on this budget overview form. So it tells parents in a more succinct form without having to go through the LCAP and add up the figures themselves, what our total budget is, what amount of our total budget is actually identified or called out in our LCAP and what those funds are being used for. So it's, it's nothing different from the budget that you've seen, nor is it anything different from the LCAP that you guys are going to see. It's just called out in such a way that they hope makes it more palatable for parents.
Well, I put my parent or grandparent hat on and I read through it and I thought, this is really a nice document, just kind of click, offer some clarity.
And it's very succinct, so you don't have to read so much.
Yes. Great, okay, are there any questions regarding that? All right, item seven, uh, oh, excuse me, item six. Uh, Local Control Accountability Plan or the LCAP public hearing, Michelle Gorges, you are on.
Are these separate items, the updates from LCAP are they all the same?
I think they're all the same. Still on, I guess.
Okay, so, thank you, um, so there should be like three documents in there, there, um, two of them are combined, they're updates. So this has been an interesting year, so we've had to not only update the eighteen, or so, the nineteen, twenty LCAP to put closure to that three-year document. Um, we've also had to start this year with an LCP, um, uh, continuity plan for distance learning and, and the things that we're doing this year with goals. And at the end of the year, we had to put an, put an update and a cap on that. And then we've had to create a whole brand-new twenty-one, twenty-four, um, guiding document with new goals, metrics and action plans for, over the next three years. So what you have before you are basically three documents, two updates and one brand-new twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two document with three goals. And the primary goals, um, I was hoping to have a nice little PowerPoint with some detail or a nice infographic for you, that'll be for the next time, so you, once, once it gets approved. Um, because I still have to do a few cleanup things with the county, so I met with the county on Friday. I have a few details that I have to make sure that are in the document, that, um, that are not in this, nothing significant, just some verbiage and, and required items. But as you can see in the new document, the three ma- major goals are, of course, to make sure that we graduate our students college and career-ready upon completing a broad, a broad course of study. Um, we also have fostering the inclusive and respectful, respectful culture and promoting participation with parents, community, equity, safety and connectedness. Um, and then the third one is, and, and as you know, we've been spending a lot of time on building our multi-tiered, uh, systems of support for all students that it was, it was, made a lot of sense for us to focus on, on that as a goal as well and provide equitable tiered systems of support academically, behaviorally and socially for all students. And, um, and with Stephanie and, and, uh, and the addition of our health and wellness coordinator and, and, you know, and Peter's been doing a good job of kind of like thumbing through all of his documents to make sure that, that we're aligning equity with those tiered systems. And so everything you see in here as far as actions are, are to make sure that we meet those goals over the next three years.
Are there questions from Michelle? Well, I'll say, believe it or not, I read the whole thing, okay? But I have a little bit of understanding on it, but I, I like the new format, I think it flows much easier and smoother. And, and I, I thought that the, the supporting information with each goal and how they broke it down, I thought it made a lot more sense than in the years past, et cetera. So I'm looking forward to the additional information that you're going to put in there. But, um, thank you for the hard work on that, it was probably a four-month project done in a little bit of time.
Yeah, four days. After graduation, I had to wait. But not without a lot of work being done this year, so. So many of the, obviously the many of the action plan, action items you're going to see, you know, that you've seen, that you've read in there, um, are things that we've already been putting into place and, you know, to build and make sure, you know, there's obviously stuff, yeah, and we have to focus in there on the sports for the special populations of English learners, foster students and low income specifically. So had to, that's one of the pieces that I had to do a better job of addressing. So you'll see a big chunk, um, in the, in the closing area where I will pull out specifically items and action items that address specifically those populations. Um, but you can already see it's embedded in there, I just had to point it out. So everything's in there, nothing's new, the goals are new, the actions are new, it's just some metrics and some final, um, statements to just make sure that it's very clear to the people that are going to be reading this beyond our LEA that it makes sense to them.
So I have a question, does that, Michelle, does it go to, we approve it and then it goes to the county office or?
Correct, correct, I am, I do have support from Michael Bab and Bridgette and I was very good.
Bublets.
Bublets, uh, so they, they've been phenomenal, even the day that I had my office full just making sure that we're dotting some i's and crossing some t's before we put it in, in the board packet. Um, you know, Bridgette and, and Michael were on top of it and, you know, looking at over saying, yeah, that's good, that's good, you know, grab this, do this. So I had a lot of support that day, they knew we were in a unique situation.
Great, thank you very much, any other questions?
Steve, do you have a question? On the, uh, yeah, this does look like you spent a lot of time doing it, so good job. And for the goals and actions, for the metric of, uh, early assessment, uh, early assessment program, EAP mathematics readiness rate. Baseline's thirty-seven percent for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, desired outcome fifty-five percent. What is that exactly?
Okay, so, um, actually, if you look at the CASP, you'll see it's identical. Um, when you look at the, the CASP math portion, you're going to see that those metrics are identical. In the past, so EAP is an early assessment program, so what it is, is when, when students take state assessments in, in, um, in English and in math, it determines whether they're college-ready for the, for English and math. So they can jump right, if they, if they do well, they can be placed in, at a community college level or university level, right into English one or right into college-level mathematics. Um, in the past, when it was CSTs, the kids actually had to check a box and say that they were, they wanted to include the last eleven questions to, to assess them for that ability. The CASP has embedded it into the entire assessment, so they just consider it the same. However, the reason I break them out is because in the state, um, guidelines, it does require that I do that.
So to put it at ninety percent would be unrealistic?
To put it at ninety percent would be unrealistic and right now, we have to make, you know, you know, reasonable goals, we think we can. And this is a three-year plan, so you know, maybe, you know, five years or six years down the road, do I think I can get? We all, our goal is always to have a hundred percent confidence with those abilities. But based on our, based on our baseline numbers, realizing what we think we could, you know, is reasonable, I would love to see it go, go over that, we're, we're doing a lot of work in the math department and math department's going to be doing a lot of work this week, so I'm excited to, we have another Solution Tree, um, PLC trainer coming in on Friday to work with them again, so.
Okay, and then for the percentage of career, the CTE pathway completers, is that thirteen point seven um, for, I don't know, two thousand nineteen, twenty, going up to twenty-five percent? I, is it ideally, what would be the, the goal for that, the?
Um, you know, so, so the way that the state measured, and I, and I told Jan that I need to probably spend some more time talking about, um, what's on the California dashboard and what those metrics mean. So there's a metric on the California State Dashboard called College and Career Readiness, because there. Because they're, they're looking at how many of our students are college and/or career-ready. And under that is a blanket of how many kids, you know, have met A through G, by literacy, seal, achievers, dual enrollment, whether they've met a pathway, a career pathway, and so forth.
So AG, I'm sorry, so AG is, that's college-ready?
A through G would be college readiness.
So between the two, 60 and 25, 85% we're saying?
No, there's multiple.
Our career and?
There's multiple, so there's multiple measurements for, to be college and career-ready. And those include a number of items. So whether they've passed a couple of AP exams, whether they've passed a couple dual enrollment courses, whether they've been college and career-ready. So there's like a little flow chart of how to become college or career-ready under the eyes of the state. And that is a metric of it. So we, so the goal is, you'll also see in there that the number of pathways currently we have are eight that exist currently that students are using. And we do need to do some work on that. And you'll also see in there where I've recently, well, where we needed a career, a CTE lead. So we've had, in our past on campus, we've had one person overseeing the PE and electives. And that's, you know, kind of a big, how do you get the very specific supports for building pathways and careers, pathways? So I broke that out to have PE and health separate from electives and CTE. And so we're going to work on looking at our pathways. Because it's, and it's not just whether they've taken CTE electives. So there has to be what they call a concentrator and a cornerstone. And they have to, they have to, they have to pass the concentrator class. And so it would be like AgMec 1 and AgMec 2. If they pass, then they're considered a pathway completer, and that's what that means. And so, yes, we do need to grow, but it's also growing it in three years to be significantly higher, not knowing what the funding and what pathways we can fund and get in place. We're limited on the number of pathways that we can do.
So, just to be, so A through G, we're talking career, college, college, career. The career, the college is A through G?
That's a, that's a, that's a metric to have them college, college-ready. Because kids can be college-ready and go to, you know.
Right, but ready. Okay, so that's 60%. Then the other would be career, and that's a 25. Should they equal 100? Or no?
No, because they're not, they're not mutually, you know, they're not.
If they're not taking one pathway, it'd be the other pathway.
There's, but there's other metrics involved. So it's whether they've taken a couple of dual enrollment courses and passed their CASP scores. So technically, a student could pass both their CASP scores, or pass both of the CASP assessments. So the math and the English CASP assessment, if they get a three or better on both of those, plus take a dual enrollment course, they're considered college-ready. So that's what I'm saying. There's, there's multiple metrics to determine whether they're college-ready. So, yeah, you can't just look at those two pieces of it.
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
Hopefully that, we can, that's a little more complicated, actually. I have a sheet that, hopefully, I'm eventually going to have students know that when they graduate, they're college and career-ready and they have a really cool something that shows up. So make sure that they know.
Michelle, I think it would be real helpful at some point in the near future if you could do a presentation for clarity on the college and career-ready and then also on the career pathways, you know, the concentrators and the cornerstone. And show us what we have and what you guys are thinking about.
That'd be great.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
No, just to thank you and your staff for putting this together. It's comprehensive, robust, and looking forward to seeing the growth in all of the different goals that you've set up. And that is now how we can best support you and your staff.
And I was going to say, four days to put an LCAP together really impresses me. That's, thank you. That's Herculean.
You know, when you've written a lot of WASPs, and I was WASPs chair on several committees for places, I just, you know, you figure out how to do it. But like I said, it was, it was work we're already doing. It was just putting it into a format, so.
Thank you very much, Michelle. Appreciate it.
And Stephanie.
Thank you, and Peter. It's kind of a group project. Thank you. All right. Item number seven, board policy updates. First reading. We have, everybody's received a lot to read. And again, I really appreciate having the guide sheet, or as we used to call it, our cheat sheet in college, for board policies to review. And we will take action on these policies at our next meeting. And does anybody have any questions regarding any of these policies? I think I don't either. Just double-check here real quick. Okay, I don't. All righty. We tabled or deleted item number eight, student exchange program, to the future board meeting, a future board meeting. At this point in time, we'll move on to L, which is board comments and correspondence. Do we have any board comments or correspondence? And I'm hoping John is still with us.
Yes.
I was hoping John is still with us. Go ahead, John.
I'm sure everybody got the same emails I did. One of the parents wrote requesting beach volleyball be added to the sports curriculum. And then there were several other emails from other individuals in support of that. And I, I think that that's only a natural sport for our high school to consider. I mean, certainly, it's not a sport that a Midwestern high school, for example, would ever be able to offer. When you take advantage, I believe, of the situation that our high school has and the good fortune of being near a beach. And so I don't think that we should necessarily, though, act hastily without having done some due diligence to see, number one, what type of enthusiasm is there within the student body for that sport? Number two, how difficult would it be to identify an individual who would be able to be the coach? And obviously, number three, what's the fiscal impact on our budget of having this? So I'm supportive of the idea and would ask that the board have some type of discussion as to doing a preliminary evaluation on the appropriateness of adding that as a new competitive sport at our high school.
John, I will let you know that, and board members, that I have already spoken to Michelle Gorges regarding this and she is working on this. Okay?
Thank you.
Can I just clarify something?
Sure.
I said that as board, we discussed teacher negotiations, of course, I'm talking about a closed session?
Yes.
Not 101, just.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah. All right, thanks, Steve. Appreciate that. All right, any other board comments or correspondence? I would like to make a comment, and that is that this last weekend, we had interviews for our new superintendent. And one of the pieces to it was a community panel that was involved in the process. And I would like to say that we were overall very pleased with the participation from the community panel. There was a nice variety of community members and staff. I think there were 10 total. And it was, we really, the board really and greatly appreciated the input from the community panel. So just want to acknowledge them publicly. I'd also like to add, and we really appreciated Ms. Westfall's beautiful breakfast and lunch that she put out for us, like, beyond high-end catering. Thank you. All right. Yeah, over the top. And with that, Board Matters, we have an upcoming board meeting scheduled for June 29th at 5:30. And that, we have some, all of those pieces that we have for public hearing will be in action items. So that is, that on Board Matters. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Nobody wants to go home?
Aye.
Okay, was it one? All right, and a second?
I second.
All right, Steve, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Terry?
Mrs. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mrs. Babcock?
Aye.
Dr. Baiki?
Aye.
Mr. Barra?
Aye.
Mr. Luke?
Aye.
All right. Meeting's adjourned at 7:05. Thank you, everyone.